I think I got it on now. There we go. Want to welcome everybody to the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education work session, our four o'clock hour. We are anticipating Ms. Barbara Jo Cooks just hasn't arrived yet, but we're going to go ahead and get started. So if everyone can put their electronic devices on silent. And then I've asked Mr. Holmes if he would do our prayer and Ms. McDonald should do our pledge for us today.
Father God, we come before you as humble as we know how. We coming for you with praise and thanksgiving. We ask right now, Lord God, that you lead, guide, and direct us into the decisions that will benefit all concerned. And we ask these things because we know you are able and we just thank you for being who you are. It's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number three, the adoption of our agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. In favor, signify by raising your right hand. Four oh. All right, we're going to give Ms. Barbara Jo just a second to get to her seat and we will allow me to write this down. All right, we will move on to item number four, our consent agenda. What is the pleasure of this board?
This is Chair motion that we receive the consent agenda as presented unless there's any corrections or additions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Brown. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Five oh. Let the record reflect that Ms. Barbara Jo was able to make it. We are then move on to, we have a couple of business items, appointment of Jackson Road Principal, Dr. Keith Simmons.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Board members, it is the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Ms. Melissa Bentley, current Assistant Principal of Jackson Road Elementary School to be the principal of Jackson Road Elementary School, beginning the school year 2024, 2025.
All right, Board members, you heard the presentation. What is the pleasure of this board?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Ms. Melissa Bentley, Principal of Jackson Road Elementary School.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Holmes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Five oh. Congratulations to Ms. Bentley.
She is not here.
She's doing her duties that she has. Understandable. All right, our certified administrative recommendations. These will be done this meeting and then the other central office will be done next meeting. The three that we have that are certified are Dr. Christopher Ridley. What is the pleasure of this board?
Some move.
Some move. Second, I'm sorry.
I have a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Holmes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Five oh. All right, Dr. Tiffany Taylor, what is the pleasure of this board?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Holmes, a second by Ms. McDonald. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed? All right, we will move on to Dr. Donald Warren. What is the pleasure of this board?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second, I take the second.
They're going to get me confused.
Yeah. Trying to whip through it, man. Trying to whip through it.
What is the pleasure of this board? Oh, we had that, sorry. Now it is any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Five oh. All right, we are now to item number seven. We're moving on to presentations and discussions. Policy BBFA Local School Councils, Mr. Adam Pugh. For first reading.
All right. Good evening Chairman Doss, Board of Education and Superintendent Simmons. Communication and Partnerships is presenting policy BBFA Local School Councils for first reading. The district will post policy BBFA Local School Councils and all subsequent policies presented this evening in assembly to receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days. The policy will be brought to the next business meeting for second reading and final board adoption. Thank you.
All right, Board members, so you have received this ahead of time and had a chance to look at it. This first read is our opportunity to give any additional feedback that we might have. Is there any discussion or questions about this particular policy?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have one if that's okay.
Yes, Mr. Holmes?
This is a question to the address, I guess, to you and Dr. Simmons. Did we ever clarify, you know, the discussion we had about this council of students or whoever and the proposed, I can't remember the name of it.
Okay, this, these.
Two different things.
Two different things.
I mean, did we ever clarify, were we duplicating?
Yes, I, so, Mr. Chair, I think what Mr. Holmes is asking is have we come to an understanding whether or not the proposed idea of a student representative on the Board of Education and the superintendent's student councils, is there any overlap in that process? We hadn't finished it at the high school level. We did do the research, if you will, at the middle school level to glean students' interest. I can't discern whether there would be overlap. What I can tell you is that the middle school population expressed an interest if that opportunity presented itself.
Okay. So, and further discussion on that, Mr. Chair, if I may. So if, and if we as a board determines that the board representative cannot serve on a school council, then that's something that we could put in there as we move forward to just be more fair and equitable to have where scholars could participate at every level. So you don't want to hog it up with one student being on the, as a scholar representative and on the school council. So that's a great point, Ms. Leader Holmes, and we can add that in the guidelines for the BOE student representative.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? So, thank you, Mr. Pugh. We will then move on to policy GBRIB. Ms. Battle?
All right, good evening, Board Chair, Board Members and Superintendent Simmons. We present to you policy GBRIB Professional Personnel Sickly Donation Bank for first read.
Board members, you had a chance to look at that. Do you have questions? McDonald? Yes.
Hi, Ms. Battle.
Hello.
I was looking at online's 15 and 16, or basically 15, that superintendent will develop regulations. And could we get those prior to our next meeting so we can go over those regulations, please? Thank you.
Anyone else?
And I would, before, and before it's placed on second read, Mrs. Battle, I know we were supposed to connect about this particular policy, but we're unable to. So if we could within the next probably 15 days, connect so that I could add my revisions to the policy while it's on first read.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Battle. Next we'll have policy JBC four, awarding units and transferring credit. Dr. Blessingame.
Chairman Doss, Board Members, Superintendent Simmons, the district is presenting JBC four, awarding units and transferring credits for first reading. There are no revisions recommended at this time.
Board members, did you have a chance to look at that and do you have any questions, comments? One to my left, one to my right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Blessingame. We appreciate that. Oh, you're up for next one. Thank you. Policy JR Student Records, first reading.
Policy JR Student Records is being presented for first reading. There are no revisions recommended at this time.
All right, Board members. Any questions or comments on that particular one?
None.
All right, hearing none. We will then move on to policy KN. Dr. Ridley.
Evening, Board Chair, Board Members and Superintendent, Dr. Simmons. Board Policy KN Grievances and Complaints is recommended for first read as presented. There are no recommendations for revisions at this time.
All right, Board members, do I have any? Mr. Brown, you recognize?
All right, yes, sir. Dr. Ridley, just a question. You may know, you may not. As it relates to the process that is outlined for grievances and complaints, is that also language that is taken from our other policies as well or regulations?
We have several regulations or policies that are on here for this particular one, and all of them are aligned.
Okay, all right. And so it looks like on this particular for the regulation, and I think this change has already been made as myself, Mr. Doss, and Dr. Simmons met last week as it relates to this policy, is that first bullet in forwarding a complaint is that if the complaint involves an administrator, the form is transferred to Human Resources for resolution. And that's just to ensure that our, where our complaints are housed, such as Student Services, that they are also communicating with Human Resources that's able to mitigate and help out with that. And so it's good to see this language was added so we know that it will benefit our school district and it won't give any more gray errors to the role that HR plays in this process.
Okay, Mr. Holmes, you recognize?
Dr. Ridley and maybe Ms. Battle, I would be, I hate to ask you a question that you're not prepared for, but I would be interested to hear, especially from the staff, how many utilize this process? I mean, how many people have you experienced utilizing this process?
From the, not from the staff standpoint, but I'll say from the parents' standpoint.
I'm mainly concerned about staff.
And we actually track those complaints?
I figured you did, Ms. Battle.
Oh, yes. And I'll tell you the most recent count, if you just bear with me, I'll pull up our tracker. But we do track those complaints and grievances. We keep a log and. So for the month of January, we had four. In December, we had two. November, we had four. So we do track these investigations. We had a total here, we had five complaints filed that we had to investigate and mitigate in January, and we did have one in December.
So where does these grievances or complaints, where's the drop dead location where they?
So the actual complaint itself, it has to be in writing. It does stay in HR. Then there's an investigation conducted. Sometimes we just, depending on the outcome, it's followed up in writing the findings of the investigation. We call it the summary or the findings of fact. And the employees that filed the complaint are notified of the outcome.
Okay, so.
Or the parent. Sometimes they're parents that filed complaints against employees.
Okay. I get what you're offline. Thank you.
I do. A follow-up question from Mr. Holmes, Leader Holmes' question to Mrs. Battle. So you said in the month of January for 2024, there were five complaints?
Yes.
So do you have a total of what it was for 2023, for the entire year?
So in 2023, we didn't have this tracking system, so I couldn't tell you that with certainty right now.
Okay. How long, how long would it take to get that information?
I would have to go, we would have to go back through the file cabinet, probably about a week and just count on the, for the year.
All right. Dr. Simmons, I would like to know that information and have that provided to the board. I mean, and I think it's just important for us to know that as we know how that they're being tracked and understanding the difference between the ones that come in from Student Services, which may be a parent or stakeholder versus the ones that come in from HR, which normally our employees will probably start there first. And then for other parents who may not be aware that they can go to Student Services, they just automatically go to HR. So I think in just understanding that number and within this policy, it delineates where to go for what situation.
So, Mr. Chair, may I? So, Mr. Brown, for clarity, what you are asking for on behalf of the board is a delineation between the number that were filed by parents, the number that were filed by employees, and that was for the school year 23?
That is correct. And if a scholar filed a complaint, so whatever the category is, I would like to know that information.
So the number based on whomever filed?
Yes, sir.
For last school year.
For last school year. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Ridley? Thank you, Dr. Ridley.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jones, policy LEC Booster Organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board Members. The district is presenting board policy LEC Booster Organizations for first reading. This is actually a proposed new policy, so I just want to give you a couple of bullet points. We had received some feedback over the last few years on a need for clarity with schools. So we developed a committee. We had the principals, athletic directors, including Mr. Stike, central athletic director as well, and employees to, and we had two separate meetings on this to look at some proposed policies. And I'd actually done this a few years ago in another organization, another school district, where I looked at about 18 to 20 in the state at the time. So then we came up with some tweaks to that policy and added some GSAS specific language as well to come up with a proposed policy here in Griffin for you all's consideration. As the bullet point says in the background, you will be upon approval of the policy brought organizations that seek approval for the board, and then you will be provided an annual update on an annual basis if they are continuing to meet the specifications as required for board approval. So that being said, we will post this new policy on assembly for 30 days for stakeholder input and then bring it back for second, second reading.
Hey, Board Members, you have a, sue, you recognize, Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Good evening, Mr. Jones. How are boost, who audits booster clubs?
So in our language, we're asking them to have an audit done. That would not be done by us. We would just be the receiver of that annual information to meet the requirement for turning it in. And we do have language in here that stipulates that the principal is allowed to ask questions, question things on the financial, receive a report on a monthly basis, et cetera. But for an annual audit, we're not actually doing that.
I know we had a situation at one of the middle schools, what, about a year and a half ago, I believe, or so, that a parent kind of did some things with the money that they should, he or she should not have done. Does this strengthen that ability for that not to happen?
Well, this, this provides clarity from an employee standpoint and a district liability standpoint. So basically, we're intending not to collect money on behalf of the booster organization. This totally keeps the booster organization separate. And let me be clear, the district needs booster organizations for support because they can provide support that we can't use taxpayer money for. So I want to make sure we understand that. But we want to remove that liability from schools collecting money, employees acting as certain officers in booster clubs to, you know, that we have certificated employees and it puts all that kind of stuff at risk. So we just want to provide clarity for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Jones for this policy as we, it actually builds upon another policy that we created that Ms. McDonald, that you were asking about in regards to being able, staff not collecting funds. And so with this, I met with Mr. Jones last week and we were able to look at surrounding districts and that are either our size or a little bit bigger and to see some of the language that they had in their particular policies and regulations. And so I think this, this document right here is the best document. As we continue, we went through, Mr. Jones was able to provide that updated information to me. And so I would ask that we, you know, if you have anything that you want to add to it, let's be sure to get that in over the next couple of weeks during that 30-day process of it being on first read. So I just want to say thank you, Mr. Jones, and to Dr. Simmons for putting this together and working with the board.
I just want to say thank you also to Dr. Simmons and Mr. Brown and Mr. Jones for working on this because I think it's really, really, really important. So thank you.
Awesome. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next we'll have Dr. Warren, our district operations update. Okay, so Chief Britt, if you will come to the podium and handle that, and then I'll allow you to introduce our guests.
Good evening, Chairman Doss, Board, excuse me, Board Members, Dr. Simmons. We have Captain Gregory from Spalding County Sheriff's Department and Lieutenant Zimmerman, Griffin Police Department, here to give us updates and addressing the concerns you have about our school's own cameras. Captain.
All the schools on cameras, to my knowledge, are working and they will be working till the end of. That includes the schools on cameras which are located each school in Spalding County.
Can you use the microphone so we have a little bit of trouble?
Please. Can you state his name again, please?
Yes, my name's Captain John Cooley with the Spalding County Sheriff's Office. All the cameras are, to my knowledge, are working at all the schools and the bus cameras are also working till the end of the year. I'm not sure exactly what statistics y'all need or anything, but one thing that we've are working on are the beacon signs. Those are the flashing beacon signs. Those are placed at each school's own, the beginning of the school's own. And some of them, the sheriff and I know that some of them aren't working properly and it's because of the battery system and the charging system, the solar panels. So we contacted the vendor on those particular beacons and they're supposed to replace the solar panels and update the battery systems on those. We don't have a time. They just contacted us this week, so we don't have a time that we're going to be out replacing the solar panels and batteries.
Any other questions? I do. I have just a few, and you may not be prepared for this, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot by any means. But I know that when we first started this process, the city and the county weren't exactly on the same page as to when citations were being written, the timeframe of that. Some were, and then the, I know that most of the signs as far as hours that are on the sign. So can you tell us from the county, is a citation written during school hours or just during the hour that is on the sign?
It's just during the hours that are on the signs. Yes, sir. It's normally one hour. For instance, I believe the elementary school, schools, the morning time is 6:45 to 7:45 and then evening time is 2:30 to 3:30. The middle schools are from eight to nine and from four to five. And then the high schools are 7:45 to 8:45 and in the evening it's 3:15 to 4:15.
Okay.
And they're only running and writing citations during those hours.
Okay. And do we have a timeframe on when we feel as though the flashing system is going to be taken care of?
No, sir, I don't. Not this time.
Okay. Is that something that once that is repaired, it should be something that continues to operate without too much difficulty? Or is that something that is a? Or is that something that is a, is a continuous breakdown problem?
In the past, it has, but hopefully the new solar panels and the updated batteries will resolve, will resolve the problem, yes, sir.
Okay, I guess I'm wanting to give ample time for, this is just one person's opinion out of, out of five, ample time to get that fixed, to get that working. But come beginning of next school year, I would want it to be in such a way that if there's not flashing lights, that there isn't a citation. Just because I think that our taxpayers need to be aware of that and know that. When it's working sometimes and not working other times, it gives the appearance that I'm okay to be at the normal speed limit and not the reduced speed limit if it's not consistent. So I'm just, again, giving my one note to that and as we move forward with that. Any other questions?
Mr.? Does the, number one, thank you for being here, Captain. Does the, for the, I know I have solar, I have some solar things in my own home that they, the panels need to be replaced and, and I believe this company that we went with is in Arizona, is that right?
Now, this, the, not, not this particular company that, that does the beacon signs, I'm not exactly sure. I don't have that information in front of me, I'm not sure who we purchased those from. But the Arizona, that's, that's the camera and the radar system that, that's at the schools. That's the, the vendor for those.
Well, I think it would be in, I think it would be good if we could get extra solar panels because I believe those are going to go bad first, only because of the wear and tear of, you know, the sun and the rain and all that kind of stuff, the weather in general. Is there any way we could have more of those on hand to, when the beacons aren't working, perhaps?
We did not, those beacons were actually purchased through the county. Those beacons are, are not a requirement for DOT to have.
Okay.
We, we put them up to, to let citizens be aware that, yes, this is a school zone. So we don't have any extra solar panels on hand right now, but once we get the new ones in, I'll try to see if we have, can get some.
Yeah, I personally like them myself because I think, number one, it's a great reminder.
Right, I agree with you.
I don't think people do a lot of speeding through school zones intentionally, some might, but, but it, it's a great reminder for me personally, and I'm sure other people feel the same way. So if you would ask that when you are in contact with the people that are going to service it, I'd, I'd be very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, and anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Like Captain Corley, I don't know that I have any more information that I can give you, but I know of a few questions that have come up. First, I'm-
What's your name?
Lieutenant Jeffrey Zimbalman with the City of Griffin Police Department. One of the questions that we've gotten quite a bit right now is, what is the status of South Hill Street at Crescent? That school zone right there for the Crescent Elementary School. That, those cameras are not issuing citations right now. And they haven't been since the beginning of the school year. And the reason for that is because we've gotten several complaints from people about that location with the speed limit dropping from forty-five to twenty-five, which that was how the law applied to that specific location. However, due to the number of complaints that the DOT received, they commissioned a traffic study at that location and then they determined that the speed limit should be thirty miles per hour in the, in the school zone. So they, they did change the speed limit. Then we had to apply for a new permit to the, to the federal government for operating the radar at that location. And we've secured that. The other thing is that we did request from the DOT to put the flashing lights there. We had installed them initially, the DOT actually made us take them down because it's a state route. So we weren't allowed to do that, they said we had to have a permit for it. So we requested that from them. The last I heard is that they have got the flashing light from the manufacturer. We're just waiting on the DOT to schedule the installation for those lights at that location. The last that I heard, it was supposed to be either sometime this month or in April. That's the timeframe that I was given to pass on to you. So if you have any questions about that, I'm sure you can contact DOT.
All right, Board members, questions?
I got one for. As far as the schools that, that are in the city, within the city limits, what's the status on all of those schools getting cameras?
Yes, sir, we, we, right now, we only have three locations in the city limits that, schools that have the cameras. Actually, well, two schools, because at Crescent, you have the, the section of South Hill Street, which is State Route one fifty-five, at, at the intersection of Crescent. That's where two of the cameras are. And then on Crescent Road itself, in front of the school, there is a camera facing both ways. And then on Poplar Street, in front of the, the main entrance to the Griffin High School. So those are the only two schools right now that we have cameras, systems on. Did I answer your question or?
Well, I, I know we gotten, I, I don't like to call them complaints, but we've gotten notification from citizens that they would like to have them. I think mainly I've heard from Moore Elementary, the Anne Street Elementary, just because they have a lot of walkers. And, and just wondering what would be the plans to put cameras up in those areas?
So I know that we have talked specifically about the issues over at Moore Elementary. As a matter of fact, I am commander over C and D shift, patrol shifts at the police department. And we have been working during the, the school days to have officers over there to enforce the, enforce the speed limit. There are a couple of issues with that location in particular that we've been trying to, to figure out solutions to for camera placement and things like that. One of, one of the biggest obstacles, I think, that we face there is that North Hill Street right there, where it's now Haskell Ward instead of Cabin Creek, comes out in front of Moore Elementary. That, that road is not on our radar permit. So we would have to apply again for a, to amend the permit to have that, that street added. And then one of the other issues that I'm not sure that we'll be able to, to conquer on that is, is the distance requirements for the signage that are required by the state law governing the, the school cameras. We have to have the warning signs within, within a certain distance before you enter into the school zone. And then where the, where the placement of the camera would be, I think there's a question as to whether or not it would really be effective because I think the issue with the, with the speed is, is on Sixth Street. And so if, if the camera is, is right on the corner where the, the car is slowing down to make the turn anyway, I don't, I don't know that it would be extremely effective at, at issuing citations to justify the cost of the system.
One, one last question, Mr. Chair. Not, not that, not that I've ever gotten a citation or anything, but, uh-
Well, I have.
But are they going through the same court or are they going through the city and going through the county?
Yeah, ours, ours go to the municipal court.
Municipal court?
Yes, and, and the county's just go to state court, yes.
Okay, thank, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Any other Board members, questions?
I just, I just have a comment, I just want to say thank you for being here today.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I have the same question, if I, two, one's a comment and then the other's a question. Mr. Holmes, I believe we did initially, if my memory serves me right, applied for all schools.
All schools.
And we were only awarded the schools that we were awarded the opportunity to put them at. So from the original, so I don't know if it's up to them or who it's up to, to get them at new schools. I know when the city last presented here, they were issuing citations from the hour before to the hour after. The time in between those two hours was what the normal speed limit was, but there was still a citation being issued by the camera. Is that still happening or do you know that or?
It, it's not, initially it was set up that way because that's what the, the law regarding the cameras prescribes. And then we made the decision to, to limit it to, to that hour in the morning, hour in the afternoon, and the school day in between. And then after some time went by, we, we decided to limit it even further so that as of now, it's only issuing citations during the one hour in the morning and the one hour in the evening when it, when we would call it an active school zone.
Okay, and if you would repeat again, if you did, what, in order for Crescent to be working again, what, what are we waiting on?
Sure, so on Crescent, in front of the school, that camera system is operational. In front of the high school, on Poplar is operational. The only one that is not for the city is on State Route one fifty-five or South Hill Street at Crescent, at the intersection there. And the reason is because the DOT changed the speed limit after the traffic study, which they did come out and change the signs, the signage, so the signage is correct now. We've been able to secure the, the correction to the amended radar permit reflecting the new speed. And then the times change as well, as you know, which, that was very helpful to us. Thank you very much for making the times consistent across the board for all the schools. Very helpful. And now we're just waiting on the DOT to install the flashing lights because that's something they have to do, we, we can't do that.
Okay, anyone else? Again, thank you very much for being here, both of you, appreciate that. Thank you, Doc, Mr. Britt. All right, we are then moved to Human Resources Update, Ms. Battle.
Good evening, Board Chairman, again, Board members, and Superintendent Simmons. I am presenting to you a quarterly update from the Human Resources Department. Our negotiables will be professional, accountable, and communicate effectively. Our mission in our vision, also distinctive brand, strong leaders, and great schools. And our mission is to encourage every student to graduate college and career ready. On our roadmap to success, this presentation will speak to goal area two, high performing staff. So here are updates, information I'll just share with you from our previous quarterly update. During this time period, you'll see where we've hired, we've had some new hire processing. I do want to raise the number of certification transactions. This is the time of year where we're renewing teachers certifications. So we had a lot of activity going on around teacher certificates and we were able to produce and have a hundred and twenty-four issued. Our employee benefits, we looked at our measurements from family medical leave prior to October. Right now, our increase, we do see an increase, but I want to remind you that some of those days are, some of those leaves are what we call intermittent. That is not continuous long-term leave, people may need two or three days per month for various reasons. You will see an increase in those numbers. Good news is our workers' compensation claims have decreased. So I am appreciative for the safety measures and awareness in the school regarding workplace safety and injuries. Here's staffing information to talk about where we are with our current vacancies. So right now, we still have twenty-two certified vacancies. Looking back at the information from last year, at this point, we were at twenty-three. So we are down one, we've managed to fill one, but the good thing about it, we do have qualified candidates filling in. Although we reported as a vacancy for hiring purposes as we're recruiting, we do have qualified candidates filling in those positions. So I wanted to share that information with you to let you know about our current vacancies. With our classified vacancies, we have this, the elementary school level, we have paraprofessionals, the middle school and the high school. And also, we've included our school nutrition and transportation department as well as maintenance and construction. We are, again, utilizing substitutes to help fill some of these voids as needed. And it has proven to be helpful and you'll see further along with our fill rates. This is an overview of some of the professional learning that we've provided the past quarter. Right now, the feedback and kick-up shows that we've had twenty-three hundred instances, people participating because one person can take multiple professional learning opportunities. And to speak to the increases to why we have seen a five percent increase on our balance scorecard, we use the information from the first quarter. We provide, we get feedback. And based on the feedback, we were able to readjust and offer professional learning opportunities that were more relevant and engaging for the second quarter. So we were able to increase our satisfaction overall with the professional learning. We are continuing with our new hire onboarding and training sessions. You see, we've increased in that number for the past quarter. And let's just speak to some of the retention and recruitment efforts in recognition. It didn't reflect in our balance scorecard, but I did want to remind the board of some of the things that we're doing now. We have hosted two recruitment events and that was onsite. One most recently was two Saturdays ago when we had a large turnout, we, what we consider a large turnout, we were well pleased. We've so far attended eleven recruitment events. That would mean colleges, universities, RISA agencies. We've also had an increase in employee recognitions where we're trying to be more intentional about recognizing the good works of our employees. We have what we call wise mentors, and these are retired educators who've come out of retirement and they're working with our induction-based teachers. The feedback was so positive that we were asked to add more wise mentors and pull some more people out of retirement. So we have increased the number of wise mentors. And you'll know that in December, we paid that second retention payment, which was initially scheduled for January, but we moved it up a month and to be sensitive to needs around the holidays. So we paid that thousand-dollar retention payment a month ahead of schedule. And then we also continue to host Acceleration Zone Job Fairs. And those are job fairs very specific to our five schools identified through the UVA Learning Labs. We continue to offer social and emotional well-being by way of a, a counseling service. We have an employee assistance program, we continue to have workshops, and you can see those numbers there. I do want to mention the fill rate for the substitutes, we have seen an increase this last quarter. We, we're at eighty-eight percent now, previously we were at seventy-eight percent. And I want to remind you with this increase of the fill rate, it does relieve some of the burden for those vacant positions. Because we are, we still on occasion have to ask a teacher to cover a class, but it's not nearly as much as we did last year, so I just want to call that out. Eighty new substitute employees have been hired this quarter. And we also want to point out that we do what we call a daily report sub to our UVA schools, our Acceleration Zone schools, a substitute reports every day. And they'll receive their assignment that morning when they check in. And that way, it allows to have consistency with coverage. Though of course, we have multiple pathways to leadership, aspiring leaders. We have the Superintendent's Advanced Leadership Academy and its yielding results. One of those candidates has now been offered a principalship. Our volunteers, we continue to process volunteers through HR, and that goes, that requires some training in the criminal background check. This quarter, we processed seventy-one volunteers. The beginning of the year, we get a, a large influx, it kind of levels off during the school year. And we have been able to turn around that response time for volunteers from two to three weeks to three to five days. So we continue to solicit employee feedback by using various tools. We conduct those state interviews, we use the engagement survey, and we are working in partnership with a retention specialist, a consultant, Jeff Cordis. So far, we've had two in-person sessions with Jeff and also one virtual check-in. We continue to use our thought exchange and we have conducted a retention audit to see the areas that we need to work in. And we have also now identified recruitment ambassadors, people that are housed at the school but help us, they go on some recruitment trips with us, and they really talk up their school and the campus. And just to give you some-
Excuse me, one second, you have a question on that particular-
Yes, on this particular slide. So with the employee engagement feedback, I know that we, when they leave the exit survey, has the consultant been able to take a look at the exit survey to see if there's anything that may need to be added or taken away from it?
He, yes, he's already, that was part of the retention audit, he's seen our exit survey.
Any, any feedback that he's given on that?
Not on the exit survey itself.
Okay, right.
Okay. Okay, um, so, and we'll give you now, you, that's a nice segue. We'll go right into an update on the exit interviews. And so you'll see the number of resignations by the month. Um, and then it will show you the exit interviews conducted online and the exit interviews done via, uh, in-person. So you should know, when we have a conversation, when a person gets the exit interview, once they resign, we send them an email. And then they have an option to either come and have someone, um, or have someone from HR come out and talk to them about their reasons for leaving. Some people just choose to do it online, some people don't even respond to it. But we give them an option for in-person, they can do it online, some people choose not to. Um, and so you'll see that those are the number of resignations reported each month. You'll see how many were conducted online, how many were done in-person, and you can see the total number conducted for each month. So as part of the thought exchange, uh, that was launched earlier, we did raise a question to find out, what keeps people here? Why do people stay? And what are some of the things that cause them to want to leave? And we use the word cloud to demonstrate some of the higher themes or threads. And you can see what those issues are there. Um, and it's something that we also found was in alignment with the feedback from the employee engagement survey. So really, what have we learned? Um, there are five areas that employees express some level of dissatisfaction. And it's student behavior and discipline, the work environment, compensation in comparison to the workload, curriculum and testing, as well as more time needed for planning and grading. Um, and I can tell you that we have some, and I'll talk about it on the next slide, but we are very intentional, we know that this year, the curriculum is changed. Um, so I've been communicating with some of my colleagues, um, um, east of here, and it's pretty much the same thing. Uh, we're all fishing from the same pool to recruit. So those are some of the things that we're hearing. Um, compensation and workload, um, again, that's, that's part of the business, so we're hearing that more and more. So what can we do? Uh, we will use this feedback, we will continue to work with our consultant, Jeff Cordes. Uh, we will develop a district action plan that will help us start to address some of these concerns that have been raised and given to us as forms of feedback. And our next step, so part of the work with Jeff, uh, we've been tasked with forming working groups. And these working groups, we've identified them as well as the facilitators. It's voluntary, um, but people are able to serve, and then based on their feedback, we can create and develop this action plan. So if you see here, these are the groups that we're going to create. Um, communication and visibility, employee appreciation. We want to support employees with assimilation into the district. Mentorship is something that came up. Student behavior and discipline, as well as curriculum and testing. So I'll take any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Ms. Battle?
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Uh, thank you, Ms. Battle. Can you tell me a little bit more about the consultant, Mr. Cortez, please?
Yes, and he is, oh boy, um, in, almost certain that I shared that information, but Jeff Cordes is a retired HR professional with over twenty-five years of experience. Um, he does consulting work with various organizations, um, major companies. I was able to connect with him through SHRM, uh, the Society of Human Resources Management. He comes highly recommended. Uh, I'll resend you his bio and all the details about his work history.
Anyone else, questions, Mr. Holmes?
Um, I got, I got a couple, Ms. Battle. First one is, um, what, going back to that employee benefit, looking at that FMLA number, what, what is, uh, has caused that number, uh, to, to increase?
So right now, when looking at that, we have forty-five out on continuous. And that could be anything from serv- um, surgery. Um, you know, family medical leave, you can take time to care for a, um, immediate family member. So it's a variety of things, but they're major medical issues.
Okay, um, and, and one thing I wanted to know about that, I know some, some organizations, like if, uh, a spouse is having, uh, having a, a child, having a baby, i- is that something that we do where the, where the husband gets to take FMLA alone with the wife?
Yeah, so if it's a husband, um, he would be eligible for what we call paid parental leave. And so we do grant, um, I think it's fifteen, it is fifteen days of paid leave. Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, the next one is, uh, is on, is on, uh, that slide where you, uh, put the question of what have we learned? Have we done a, have we done a deep dive, or have we drilled down on what, uh, employees said about, um, the dissatisfaction about work environment?
Yes, um, we have very specific comments, um, culture and climate. Um, just, it's a variety of things, um, Mr. Holmes. And I'm, I'm happy to put that in a summary report and share it with the, the board through Dr. Simmons.
Yes, I, I, I would like to see, uh, what, what, what specifically are they talking about with that? And I, and I do have a question. Uh, they have on here, under the dissatisfaction, curriculum and testing, do they understand, do most employees understand that?
I think some of them don't understand that that's, those are state mandates.
Right.
And I think, you know, some of them do, I can't really speak for them, but it's a state mandate, and we, we're following the guidelines of the state.
I mean, uh, and I, I'm glad you said that, and I think sometimes, not only staff, but citizens don't understand that most of the stuff that we do, if not, you know, uh, majority is mandated, uh, and tied, and funding is tied to it. So, so, uh, I, I don't know how we could do a better job of educating, or, you know, just letting the employees get a better understanding of that. Uh, one, one last question. I, I'm, I'm curious, because I, I've seen it in the healthcare field, and, and, you know, I know you keep up with the latest, but has there been any discussion? Uh, has there been any talk of having a compliance officer in school systems?
Not to my knowledge. Um, I think the work of, when you say compliance, you mean, um, mandatory training or-
This, this, in the healthcare field, this compliance officer is act, is kind of crazy. Uh, they are actually paid by the organization that they're in. But they work independently from the organization. And it, and it's a, a different outlet where employees, when they have complaints and issues, they can go to that compliance officer, and they can, uh, address it, whether with the administration or, you know, top-down type of, type of, uh, process. And it, it is something that has been around in the healthcare field for a while, but I was just wondering, has that, has that reached the educational, uh, arena?
Not that I'm aware of. On occasion, on a very complicated investigation, we will use an external auditor, uh, external investigator, someone who doesn't know anyone. Um, and they'll come in, and this person is a retired investigator from the Professional Standards Commission. And he'll come in and conduct a, uh, fair and unbiased investigation for us. So I'm familiar with that process. But I'm not aware of any one particular person that works within a district. And that's all that they're, there to do. I'm not aware of that.
And see, with, with, uh, a compliance officer, they just don't come in for investigation. They're actually there every day in the organization. They're there every day.
Yeah.
So, so, so they, they, uh, visit different sites, that they have offsites. Uh, and, and, and I, I guess, you know, that works pretty good in the healthcare field, because the employees feel like they have someone that they can have, uh, confidence in to address the issues, because they, they don't work for the facility, but they are paid by the facility.
Okay.
They, they, they are mandated to pay, uh, to sponsor that position, but they don't work for the organization. And, uh, and I was just wondering, has that discussion, uh, come about in the educational arena?
I've not, not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
To the dress side.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Holmes, uh, I just want to put this out there. Uh, this is the season in which we are looking at all things relative to the next school year. Um, and I have had some conversations. I am familiar with a compliance, uh, officer, compliance specialist. Uh, I chuckle, because my first run-in with said person, um, indicated that my, my writing of an IEP of a student had fallen much short of the expectation as my first year as a teacher. I offer this to you because I did intend to possibly look at a resource slash compliance specialist as a title, uh, not for the reasons, uh, whole that you had mentioned, but for some of the reasons to ensure things, particularly in special ed, uh, were being done in the manner in which we needed to do them. I only offer that to you, Mr. Holmes, and the rest of you board members. In the event that you, that I move forward with that title, it would be repurposing duties and responsibilities, that it not be seen for what you just described, but it would be for what you just described. Does that make sense?
I understand, I understand.
So I, I, I am familiar, yes, sir. Um, but I did, I thought it was appropriate to share with you today, in the event that I move forward with that restructure, uh, put that title in front of individuals, that it not be associated with this more robust concept, but specifically as it relates to paperwork, to ensure that students' needs are being met and that we have a means of monitoring, assessing, and evaluating what that process looks like. I, I will continue to look at that more holistically. Uh, like I said, um, in, in very, very large school districts, compliance officers are, uh, a mainstay. For one such as ours, um, in many cases, Mrs. Battle represents that compliance. Um, but I'll continue to research that, and if you'd like, I can get you some updates on what that work looks like in school districts, maybe in the, in the metro region or in school districts in Georgia proper.
Okay, I, I would relish, uh, getting that information.
Understood.
Any other questions for, yes, Ms. Battle?
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Um, Ms. Battle, I know this is not your, not your lane, so to speak, but since you brought it up, based on the page of what we have learned, I'm a believer that student behavior and discipline is pretty rough here, not only here, but in a lot of districts throughout our country. I believe that we need to think outside the box about how to put this in a corner, so to speak, to help those teachers and to help those students that came to teach today and that came to learn today, the ability to teach and the ability to learn. I don't know how we can do that, but I, when I go visit schools, I hear this a lot, that, you know, student behavior is, well, the term is off the chain, so to speak. Um, and I'm concerned about that, not only for our system, but throughout our country. I believe the social skills of children greatly declined because of COVID. I mean, we, I think everyone in the room would agree to that. So I'm, I'm charging our system and our leaders within our system to think outside the box, to how we can help our teachers teach. And I used to say this to my own students, if you didn't get on the bus today to learn, why did you even come to school, you know? Um, it's the same kind of thing, so. And I'm also worried about the curriculum and testing, I hear the rumblings about that. You know, for me, the mandated testing is only what the state requires. Is that correct, I believe? Is that correct? No? No? Okay, that are, that is mandated by the state, okay. Could, could the board get a list of mandated testing and additional things that perhaps Griffin Spalding is doing? Because that's another thing I hear a lot, is that, um, there's just too much. And I think we need to take a look at that. I was the last year of CRCT, you know, that's pretty much all we had back then. But now, it's, it's different based on the modalities we're using, the programs we're using, that type thing. So those are the two things that really, I, I'm real concerned about, the, the testing aspect, and then just teachers being able to teach and students being able to learn. I, I just really feel like we've got to come outside the box with regard to get that handle on it. And I'm, I know some schools are worse than others, some leaders are better than others with regard to that, too. So, uh, but I would like a list of what, what we do is mandated and, and non-mandated, and just take a look at it on paper, please. Thank you.
Any other board members? Thank you, Ms. Battle.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll have, uh, Dr. Tiffany Taylor, Teacher and Leader Effectiveness update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Doss, Board members, Superintendent Simmons. It is with great honor, I stand before you to give you the updates for the Teacher and Leader Effectiveness, uh, Division, um, for March. And so this presentation today will focus mainly on the actions that we have taken in the first semester and our second semester adjustments. And we know that it will hit on all of the focus areas. Um, it is our aim that we would continue to support our leaders so that they are strong instructional leaders, so that they can support our schools, um, to empower our students to graduate college and career-ready. We have already heard this afternoon our roadmap to success. And I would just reiterate that as we look at student achievement this afternoon, that we would be reminded that in order for us to have high, highly effective, uh, and strong student achievement, it is very important that we would have strong organizational and operational efficiency. Um, we struggle with high-performing staff. Uh, we struggle with, uh, engaged family and community. And thus, some of that burden does fall on student achievement in the Division of Teacher and Leader Effectiveness. And I do thank my support staff who is here this afternoon, who has been, um, lifting up this work. I have three objectives this afternoon. Uh, one is to provide you an update on our first semester progress. I will then, then get into our second semester adjustments, and then give you a brief update on the Gifted Services pilot that goes along with the information memo that you do have attached to the board documents this afternoon. So first semester, um, this is a celebration. In eighty-five percent of the classroom that we have visited, visited, with at least twenty-one hundred observations, we have found that a success for the first semester is that our teachers, while it has been a strain on them to implement new curriculum in, uh, several content area, they have met that challenge. And when we visit our classrooms, eighty-five percent of those are using those HQIM, many of which are mandated from the state. And I'll be providing you an update on those mandates and those tests. In addition to that, we are meeting House Bill, um, 538 and the Senate Bill for Early Literacy by providing some of the required training on structured literacy. So we have Letters Cohorts One and Two that are wrapping up Unit Seven and Unit Three, so that our leaders and our teachers will be prepared to do the work in the classroom with, uh, structured literacy. We are one of very few districts who partnered with the Georgia Department of Education to provide additional math training, um, professional learning to our teachers and leaders, so that they would be better equipped to roll out the, um, new math standards and the new math curriculum. One of those concluded today with our secondary teachers here on campus getting training, um, from the Georgia Department of Education. Kudos to Dr. Greer and her team for their leadership in that effort. Next, I would like to highlight that our AVID implementation is underway in our middle schools and high schools. And I specifically recognize Spalding High School's implementation of AVID, as they are making sure that their, our students are offered those opportunities to be college and career-ready during the AVID elective. As I move on to science, um, I would like to report to you that we have had eighteen district science professional learning- science professional learning sessions that have yielded two hundred and forty-five participants. In addition to that, we have been in classrooms to observe the practice of science, uh, curriculum. Sixty-five language arts classrooms, sixty-nine middle school, and fifty-seven high school classrooms have been visited, respectively. In addition to that, we offer, offer Wharton-Gillingham Professional Learning Communities after school where teachers can come and again, get that additional support as Wharton-Gillingham is one of the approved structured literacy curricula that we can offer, um, for, to meet the requirements of the House Bill. We have brought before you several regional winners, um, in academics, which would also include CTAE Fine Arts. And then also, I would like to highlight Dr. Fields and her work as we did roll out the first Social Studies Fair that this district has had and put forth a lot of students, um, to compete there, um, in Social Studies. Finally, a new recognition is, uh, we found out this week that, uh, Griffin High School is recognized as an Advanced Placement or AP Expansion School. What that means, Griffin High School, they have year over year increased the number of AP offerings at their school. And so they did make that state list. Why don't we celebrate Griffin High School? Next, I would like to move into our MAP reading, projected proficiency. I did provide for the board a full, uh, MAP report where you have data, um, for a couple of years. But I'd like to highlight this year's projected proficiency from the winter. Uh, first, I would ask you to, um, when you, when looking at this data, we see that second grade is listed, but we know that our second graders do not take the Georgia Milestones Assessment. This is an example of an assessment that we do give in second grade so that we do not wait until students are in the third grade to capture that data to see how they're doing towards proficiency. So when we remove the second grade students, a, a strength of this data is that fifty-six, fifty-six percent of our students are scoring at the developing or above on the winter MAP scores. In comparison to how did our students this, do this time last year, forty-three percent of our students were at the same level compared to last year. Some of the challenges that we see with these data is that, that, that is about a three percent decrease from when we tested in the fall. Um, at fall, we were at fifty-nine, um, percent. What are some of the challenges? We know that we, when teachers are learning a new curriculum, as we are looking at alignment, and teachers really learning how to use the Savvas curriculum and the HMH curriculum, it is research-based that there sometimes is a curriculum dip and that could attribute to some of the decreases that we see here. This does give us an opportunity to con- continue to implement the curriculum and then also support the curriculum with I Ready. And all of our schools have submitted extended learning plans and many of them have, um, began to remediate their students in preparation for the spring Georgia Milestones. Next, I would like to move on to our MAP projected proficiency for the winter. I would also remind you that we would remove the second grade scores. And as far as the strength, sixty-one percent of our students at this time are, um, in the developing or above range. Last year, uh, this time, we were at forty-one percent of our students. So while this does appear to be a pretty significant gain over last year, I would caution us because we know that we have new math standards and the MAP assessment is not yet aligned to the new math standards. But what we know is that our I Ready is aligned to the new math standard, standards. And I have provided some comparative data on the students that are using I Ready. We will, in math, also continue to implement the curriculum, support our teachers with training, and utilize I Ready as a supplemental, um, curriculum to fill in some of those gaps and continue with our extended learning plans. So based upon those data and other data that we have collected, what is our plan for the second semester? We will shift now that we know that eighty-five percent of our teachers are utilizing the curriculum. They have met that challenge and I celebrate our teachers on that. They have learned new curriculum. They are, uh, digging into that in a quick and short period of time because we know that our scholars need that. Um, I would just remind us that, uh, you know, just last year, we were implementing RCD and we would talk about the complaints of the curriculum. There were many. And so this year, the complaint is different. It's not, it's not that they have a lack of resources. It is that I have so many resources, I need more time in terms of how to use that. So to me, that's a celebration. So our, uh, focus in the second semester will be on supporting our teachers to go deeper with the standards, moving beyond compliance of how to use the curriculum and to making sure that they are aligning their instructions to the standards. We would also like to highlight that the Georgia Department of Education has awarded six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for structured literacy coaches. The, the, this amount of money will provide three coaches. One will be for Ann Street, one for Atkinson, and one for Moore Elementary to focus specifically on incre- and increasing and improving our students' ability to read. That's a celebration. Next, this semester, we are working, uh, we continue to work on the Breakthrough Teams with third grade and sixth grade. We are excited to roll out this initiative because last year, as a result of implementing Breakthrough Teams in third grade, we saw almost double-digit gains in several schools. And those are the schools that were celebrated by Richard Woods as literacy leaders. So we'll continue with that work. Uh, we know that we have the UVA Acceleration Zone support, um, happening. You have already heard some of that from Ms. Battle in which we offer differentiated professional learning, um, additional job fairs for those schools. They have priority substitutes and then additional supports from our content coordinators and our executive officers. We will continue our Literacy Advisory Council. Um, this council meets as it is, uh, put together solely to, um, stay abreast of House Bill five thirty-eight and Senate Bill forty-eight. As we know that there are some very massive changes that are coming down, uh, for early literacy. And that is a committee that has been convening now for over a year, year and a half to make sure that we're headed in the right direction with literacy. Our summer learning planning is underway. You do have an information memo that is attached for your review, as you have asked me for a monthly update, that is provided for you. Um, what's coming down? So we have new English Language Arts Standards. And it seems like this slide continues to talk about the new things that are coming down. So that does speak to some of the curriculum changes and some of the assessment changes that are coming. We will begin to train our teachers in twenty-four, twenty-five for a twenty-five, twenty-six implementation of new English Language Arts Standards. Um, behind that, you see that there are some changes going on with Health and PE. And with Health and PE, the state does require that the Board of Education would put together an advisory committee for Health and PE. So Dr. Simmons will be bringing that forth to you, um, so that you can make a decision in terms of, um, how we would like to move forward in meeting that requirement. And then finally, uh, we will begin to work in our gifted advisory this month. Our first meeting is scheduled for March twenty-seventh, um, from four until five-thirty at the Griffin Region College and Career Ca- Academy. And so while I'm talking about gifted education, I would like to go ahead and highlight, um, the next steps for the pilot. And so we have launched the application that has been closed. It yielded sixty-one applications, thirty-five from parents, thirteen from teachers, and thirteen from students. We have launched a needs assessment by which all community members are encouraged to give their input in terms of what do they feel is the greatest need for our gifted education program. And we will utilize that in our gifted advisory program, um, council as we come together and review what our needs are, um, for gifted. Uh, next week, the week of March eleventh, I will be notifying those, um, who are accepted, um, to that committee. And as stated, we will have our first meeting on March twenty-seventh. These are just some updates from the previous presentation that I gave you on the gifted pilot. Uh, we will be training. We have identified two elementary teachers per school, um, who have agreed to getting their gifted endorsement. I'm working with Human Resources and we will roll that training out in the fall. And you see listed the professional learning that teachers have already received who are part of the pilot already this year. On the next page, I highlight the changes, not necessarily a change, but an update. The red indicates the day that Dr. Barnes is supporting, uh, the pilot schools. In addition to this, these are our gifted numbers for elementary as of December. As I go to the March slide, what you'll see is that our elementary numbers have increased, um, to, uh, by one hundred and twenty students since I last gave you a presentation. We are embarking upon our spring testing. We have a hundred and seventy-eight students in elementary who have been identified for testing. So what that means, if trends hold true, probably about a hundred or so of those students will be identified and we'll be looking for a space for those students, um, in the coming semester. As for middle school, you'll see just a slight decline in the number of stu-, uh, gifted students. Uh, that is due to attrition. Those students have moved out of the gifted program, moved, um, to other schools. And then there is no change for the gifted enrollment for our high school. This concludes this presentation. And again, as I just wrap up and I, I close this presentation, I just want to share what an honor it is for me to be here, to give this presentation. I thank my staff and the hard work that they have put in to make sure that we are leaving Griffin Spalden better than we found it. Are there any questions at this time?
Board members, any questions?
I mean, Dr. Taylor, and I appreciate you, uh, highlighting the work that your staff has done, but I, I'm, I'm just really curious as to the nuts and bolts of what, what, what you and your staff and everyone has done. I guess, uh, I don't want to say, uh, to solicit or, and I saw the numbers that you put down as far as how many people, was it that? Had numbers from students, parents? So how?
Sixty-one applications.
Say what now?
Sixty-one applications.
Right.
Thirty-five parents.
How did we, uh, how did we get to where we are now, uh, and we wasn't there before? So, so, so what exactly were the internal nuts and bolts of, of driving?
Process?
Yeah.
And so we, uh, put out a Google form, which was a quick application, um, where we asked stu-, uh, parents, teachers, and staff what their interest would be, um, for serving. Um, that application was open approximately two weeks of time. Um, I communicated that, um, internally through the communicator. Uh, Adam sent that out broadly by way of social media and emails as well , uh, to solicit parent and community, um, parent, teacher, and student participation.
So, so I guess that, that's something that we wasn't doing per se, not in that manner?
Well, what I will say, the last time that we had a gifted task force, there was a similar process. There was an application for that.
Okay.
This is the first review that I'll be conducting, um, during my tenure.
And I don't, I don't know if it's a question or just a statement, but Dr. Simmons and Dr. Taylor, I was just looking at, you know, she mentioned about two additional advisory councils. You know, sometime we get on that trend, that trend train and, uh, we get to rolling and, and we find ourselves somewhere we don't need to be. How, how is that looked at as far as how these councils, advisory councils, uh, come into fruition?
Yes, sir. So, um, board members, foremost, thank you for the, the question, uh, Mr. Holmes. It has always been a practice of mine to have councils. Uh, I shared with you in my application and interview process that I, I would have a parent, teacher, and student council. This particular council came at the request of the Board of Education regarding, uh, what was either a, a desire to have a more holistic or inclusive process and voice or, or the absence of what may have felt like their, their, that voice not being present or being dormant or what have you. Uh, the other councils, uh, for the most part, have either come at the request of the board or the suggestion to the board than the request from the board. Uh, but the only councils that I've always operated under or operated with have been that of the students, parents, teachers. Uh, any other council was not a council that I intended for or planned for, but it's a council in response to.
Any other questions, board members? I have just a couple, um, I know your first meeting is March twenty-seventh. How often are you going to try, or how many meetings before the end of the school year do you anticipate getting?
Once per month and so at least four. At least four.
And?
And we'll set those dates when we get to the first meeting.
Awesome. Will you share with us then those that went through the process and who, those names of who are in there? And so that we can have those?
Absolutely.
And, uh, and then whatever those dates are?
I will.
Dr. Simmons?
For clarity, when you say share with us, you want to know who all applied or who selected?
Um, I'd like both.
Okay.
If I can have both.
Okay.
Just so I, and, and be aware. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, I would like to solicit your appointment, um, from the Board of Education to be on that committee.
Okay. And when do you need that, those names of who the board members that are going to be on that?
Um, so it is my, uh, goal that within this week coming, uh, we would have a complete committee.
All right. We will make sure that that happens for you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, any other questions for Dr. Taylor?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I know, to go back to that, um, I know, Mr. Chair, if you will allow, I know that you said that there will be one to two representatives. Now I'm speaking up for myself. Are there any other board members who want to serve on that committee?
I would be interested.
Okay.
We can decide together.
Awesome.
I would be also, so we, we'll definitely work that out. Uh, Finance Team update, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board. Again, uh, it's really, uh, I'm pleased to be able to talk to you this evening. I've got a couple of presentations, but typically I'm just talking to you about money. So I wanted to focus on a couple of interesting topics that we've got going on in the district. Uh, so I'll focus on three different topics here in just a second. Uh, I will be hitting on professionalism, accountability, and hopefully I'm going to communicate effectively, reduce your questions after this presentation. Everything we do, again, is about empowering student and students to graduate college and career-ready. And the items I'll be discussing, we'll touch on pretty much the entire roadmap to success because it touches all employees and then it touches some just core users here in our district. So, uh, when I was talking to the superintendent, we felt it was important to update the board on our software package that you all, uh, approved for us, February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. When you hear the terms Tyler Technologies, that's the parent company. Munis Software, uh, and they've renamed their stuff a couple of times throughout my tenure in schools. But when I say Munis, that's our core accounting package, which is purchase orders, payroll, that kind of stuff, et cetera. So I just wanted to remind you, we, uh, embarked on that journey through a cooperative purchasing process. I think, Mr. Holmes, way back, you asked us about cooperative purchasing and we actually had that written in our policy in GSCS before I even got here to the district. So we are able to use a lot, utilize Sourcewell for that. That has been a good, good thing for us here in the district. Uh, so that has actually gone live with a few items. So I wanted to kind of give you a threshold of what's coming here on our first slide. So phase one was, uh, purchase requisitions, purchase orders, and budgeting. That went live right after our Christmas break. And that involved, uh, some training for bookkeepers, uh, and principals right before the Christmas break. It's also involved some, uh, open labs, uh, some additional training in the month of January, early February. And some of that, on an ongoing basis, will continue to, our contract for implementation is over. We're trying to look at remote learning days or any other times that students aren't here to be able to put some additional training, uh, in place. Uh, we've actually been able to utilize core certified trainers from Tyler instead of just our in-house training, which is what my prior experience was used to. So I think that's worked out, uh, and served us well. So purchase requisitions are now, uh, initiated, uh, remotely. They can be done from a remote working environment. Uh, it's all web-based. Uh, you don't have to be sitting at your desk to do that. Uh, we use smart workflow approvals now. So if, if a bookkeeper A, uh, puts in a requisition to order some items, it'll go to the principal. some items, it'll go to the principal. The principal will then approve it. It will go to whoever's in the next automated workflow based on dollar threshold or program, federal programs that may go to Ms. Austin. Then it'll come to my office and Ms. Timms, who was back here in the back with me earlier in this session, and she will move it to me. I will approve it, and then a digital purchase order will go back to the school. So all of that is a different process from what the schools have experienced before January third. We've actually, I've got this on a later slide, I'll go ahead and mention it, four-hundred-and-ninety-one purchase orders is what we've approved since January third, with probably another hundred stuck in the requisition state right now that have not been converted yet. So all of that is Phase One. The next thing that's actually coming to us is April the eighth is our target date to go live with local school accounting. You may know it as LSA, is the school checking accounts. That will also be on one platform through Munis. Right now, schools, some of them handwrite checks, some of them do enter checks after the fact, et cetera. All of that's going to be put on a purchase order basis through workflow approvals, and we'll have electronic checks produced the same way. So April eighth is our target date for that. We've purchased printers for the schools. We're setting them up with microtoner, so they'll use blank check stock, not pre-numbered checks, so it cuts down on fraud. So all of that's been purchased for the schools and approved from the state with our SR3 application. And another item I'm calling in Phase One is employee expense reimbursement. I did this in a prior district. Some of our people in the room have worked in Munis before, and they've not seen employee expense reimbursement, but it will allow us to use our employee self-service portal and allow employees to upload their travel, their mileage, their expenses through a portal. It'll go through automated workflow. They will know who's holding it up, and we know that for transparency, like if it's sitting on somebody's desk, it'll be in their queue, but they can be in Hawaii somewhere. They can be in New York, they can be anywhere, and they hit to prove it's coming back for workflow. So that's going to speed us up, and we look forward to getting that sometime in mid-May. It's our target date.
So when you say employee, you including board members?
Board members, yes, sir. You'll be able to, Ms. Ray's looking forward to providing you all some training in there. Is that right, Ms. Ray? So yes, sir, it would apply to anybody that's actually on our payroll. When I say employee, you get your check stub, it's the same portal, you'll be able to do that in. So speak. But you came on board now, you came on board. So Phase Two is human resource management, payroll, employee self-service, kind of goes along with some of what I just said, but Ms. Battle's office and my office right now, we've actually got some in-house trainers this week. We're going to go live July first, twenty-twenty-four. What we're going to do is go live with our new employee self-service portal, which will include like a paycheck simulator. So if you want to sit at your desk and predict what your tax change would cause in your net pay, you can do that. It won't save the data. You can up your 403B valid deduction, et cetera, and see how much that changes your net pay and then get back out of it. We'll have all of that, we'll have graphical illustrations of your paycheck and benefits. All of that'll be in the month of July. We're also going to be putting in a new application portal and moving to a new how people solicit jobs or apply for jobs here in Griffin Spalding will be through a Munis portal, and if they're accepted for the job, that will download their data into payroll and HR, so we'll eliminate double entry, increase efficiency. So again, all of that is coming in the month of July, and I'm going to talk a little bit about payroll and my third item in just a second, but that's Phase Two. Some other modules that we're going to get to include, you all know we do an ACFR, which is a, our audit report annually, we do more than we have to require by the state, and we apply for awards every year. They have a module that helps with that. We also have capital assets or work orders. We're going to look at that module as well, and then we have a contracts and bids module that will work in conjunction with our procurement process to hopefully allow us to change our procurement process to more electronic and have an ease for a vendor whenever they are applying here in our district. So a couple of just points on this, I wanted to mention, we have core users and then we have everybody. Core users, when I say that, I'm normally talking about like our bookkeepers at our school, or our principals or directors, whoever our initiators are and our approvers, those are our core users, so they have to have an ID in Munis. When we get to employee self-service, everybody will have access to that. Fifteen hundred people will have to have a place to see their paycheck. So they'll be a user, but not kind of bogging the system down as a core user. So when I refer to that, that's two different concepts. Centralized workflow monitoring, as I mentioned earlier, we can, we know we have four-hundred-and-ninety-one purchase orders that we approved. Well, I can go right now, and I was kidding with Ms. Battle a while ago, she approved a requisition. I went and looked her name up, and she's got a zero, but she had three earlier today. So I can tell who's got how many left still that they've not moved to the next approver. But once she moves it, it's on Carol Timms now. She's got three more, and then I've got, I'm about to have three more. So we can use that to smartly alert some of our users if they have forgotten that there's something in their portal to move on. It helps us in our purchasing process. And finally, on Munis, I just want to reiterate the cutting-edge technology. It is a progressive environment. Lonnie Harper and his staff would probably attest to this. We are going to try to help people get more working with apps. So Munis has two apps that they call a Munis At Work app that you can have on your phone and a Pro Requisitions on your phone. So our core users have that set up, and then there's a Munis ESS app for paychecks that you will also be able to have on your phone. So everybody else would have that available sometime probably in July. So two apps that we'll have. So for Munis, that was my first topic. I'll run through the topics and then take your questions at the end unless you want to stop me. The second topic I wanted to share with you is procurement. Again, you all graciously approved a position that is works within the finance department. We titled that a Budget and Procurement Analyst. Board approved it FY twenty-three. Carol Timms, again, is doing a good job, and she is, was in here earlier with me. And just to reiterate the function of that job, we're trying to create and are creating a centralized position to really lead GSCS in procurement, and we felt that we had a need to improve communication, planning, formatting, and through a committee approach. So one of the things I've talked to Ms. Timms about is creating a culture where we solicit that feedback at the end of this year for next year or at the beginning of the year for the end of the year, where, look, what do you think you're going to need bidding out for the entire year? Okay? Let's start, well, when do you think that item's going to need to have board approval? And if they tell me May, then you know you need to back up because Ms. Ray and Dr. Simmons are going to need the review of those recommendations several weeks before the board gets it. And to get it to Dr. Simmons, we've got to have an evaluation of those bids several weeks before it gets to Dr. Simmons. And then to do that, you've got to have a timeline for bids submitted, and I'm going from backwards all the way to the front. You've got to solicit feedback from the vendors, you've got to advertise, we've got to have a committee to evaluate the bids, so some of that could be a couple of month process. So if you looked on GSS's website right now, you'd see there's ten bids that are posted. A lot of those are nutrition, several of them are legal services, et cetera. Y'all remember when we did those bids, those are out there where you can see what we actually wrote up as a RFP proposal. So all of those went through a process to get to what the recommendation was to the board. So just wanted to reiterate that whole, that whole process somewhat, maybe the maintenance department has done that before we created this, but for all other items, I don't know that we had a formalized process for that, and that's still growing in Ms. Timms's role, but it's headed in the right direction. We also found out that the state procurement registry, where we have to advertise items over a hundred thousand dollars for bid, they want one single point of contact for a district, so that will be Carol here in my office. So we're already set up to provide that upon their request as well. So some of the bullet points, increasing the transparency, you know, being able to select committee members to serve on evaluations, and I actually utilize an approach where I don't always, if it's a finance item, I want a principal, I want somebody unrelated to finance in there, I don't want just finance folks, I want some other objective point of view when we try to evaluate these bids. So she leads the committee for that. I mentioned earlier, Munis has a bid management module that we're going to look to see if that will help us in how we communicate open bids for vendors. The point of contact for communication is something we're working on with Carol, and again, I'm titling this procurement, but her role is budget and procurement, so she's also right now in the role of the budget season, highly communicating with principals. Some people in the room have been getting shared documents and budget documents from Ms. Timms, and so we're trying to get that, get that role fully involved in budget and procurement at the same time, so she, most of her efforts right now have been in that area, which I'll talk about in the next PowerPoint. So just to top off the procurement piece, our enhanced communication through timely interaction with personnel, and that includes bookkeepers, principals, directors, and vendors. We just want to be able to act a little bit more quicker and respond to people, be more proactive than reactive. I do think we're headed in the right direction there. I think she's been a really good addition, and this ain't about her, this is about the position. She's been a really good fit here in our district. The third thing, I wanted, before I show you that slide and for everybody to see, we are really proud to announce that we will be implementing a new procedure in Griffin Spalding County Schools. Forever, the district has been a once-a-month pay cycle district, and we're going to move to semi-monthly payroll effective this summer. So if you will be able, if you will see some of the, some of the bold items I have, it will apply to all classes of employees, certified and non-certified, two times a month. We do not have the schedule established yet. It'll be a mid-month, end-of-month. It could be fifteenth and thirtieth, fifteenth, thirty-first, fifteenth and first, somewhere in that range. We'll get that schedule developed. We do plan on doing videos, putting it in the GSCS communicator, let's talk, administrator meetings, emails, one-call messages, and any other type of communication that we can come up with to get this message out. We do feel like we're pretty, pretty ahead of it right now, so we want to get the message on out, so we'll be ready by the time July comes. If you remember, about three years ago, I shared some data with you that we were actually in the majority, a hundred and forty-one out of a hundred and eighty-eight districts were doing once-a-month payroll, and that survey I conducted is probably three to five years old. Some of that's changed, but the majority still do once a month, but we do feel like this helps us in Griffin Spalding, and the main reason for doing this is to increase our retention, and hopefully we recruit people to Griffin Spalding to want to be here and differentiate ourselves. So really, we will be developing a frequently asked questions document that will also go out as soon as we can get that done, and it's going to take a little bit of time. And the last bullet, we do need to do a needs assessment. I want the board to understand that. We're looking at finance, we're looking at HR, we're looking at departments and schools to make sure we're set up to do this the right way. We got to have the right labor force, we got to look at job descriptions to make sure we're set up to be able, because this is now going to be two payrolls versus one. So just wanted to leave that thought with you, and really, I tried to do that pretty quick, but that's, that's all I got on an update. Any questions that I can help you with?
Board members, any questions on that? All right, we'll let you move then on to your overview priority.
And board members, as we're pulling this up, I'll just go straight to our points. Y'all, again, this is communicating effectively, this is touching all of our boxes on our roadmaps to success, always talking about that bottom-left one, line resources to students and staff needs. And wanted to remind you, as we get in budget season, these are our beliefs, and we will be re-telling ourselves these four goal areas as we get ready into budgets. All of these items I'm showing on this slide are really the same as the last time. I just wanted to go to the bottom item and remind you that I sent you an email earlier today that there was a little bit of the, a few of the budget meetings that switched around based on a bond meeting that we're going to have to talk about that. So March eleventh, thirteenth, twenty-first, twenty-sixth are the dates, but if you'll check your email, I sent you the ones, and the ones that are in yellow, you probably got it about three o'clock, the ones that had a different, different change on the time. Budgets for the departments, we were turned in yesterday, the schools turned theirs in Friday, so we have that, and we'll be doing some initial analysis tomorrow and getting ready for those budget meetings next week. I want to actually just pull on down, because most of this, again, is the same, to some items to consider and to remind you a few things. FY twenty-four, which is the year we're in, had a small FTE enrollment increase prior, in the prior year. As soon as we get our mid-year allotment sheet, which will be sometime probably in the next three weeks, since the budget for mid-year has been signed by the governor, we'll find out that number of FTE, and that normally is the same number that goes into allotment sheet for FY twenty-five. So we'll be able to see if we gained any versus the initial of FY twenty-four. That's really important. The governor has not signed the FY twenty-five budget. At this point, it still has a twenty-five-hundred-dollar recommendation from the governor for a certified salary pay increase, but you all know the House and Senate can debate that. We'll see what actually comes out of that. Crossover Day was last week, so there's ten to eleven days left in the session. March twenty-eighth pegged to be the last day of the session. This is a big item I wanted to tell you about. We talked last time, non-certified health insurance was going up per month from one-one-nine-five to one-four-four-five, and last month's slide said it was about a million dollars. We looked at our employee count, and we were a little high, so we reduced that to five-hundred-and-fifty grand. That's the good news. Bad news is the state's now looking at another certified increase from fifteen-eighty to seventeen-sixty. That's actually only proposed at this point, but if it does go through, it'll cost us another million three fifty. So I hate to just leave it as it's just proposed, but that's the language that's been given to us at this point. And just to repeat, we'll be bringing some more compensation recommendations to you at some point in the tentative budget, which will be in April. We are looking at doing our budget levels at ninety-five percent to offset any increases of other items for inflationary costs, so we'll be looking at all of that here in the next few weeks. As a reminder, SR three is not eligible for FY twenty-five, so anything that's in SR three that's essential for the district will have to offset that cost in the general fund. So next steps, kind of just told you about some of that. Analysis of the Spalding County Tax Assessment Digest, that's always on here, but there is a bill in the legislature to limit assessments. Don't know if it's going to make it all the way through to day forty. If it does, it could impact our digest, our mileage, et cetera. So just our future milestones, distribute the budget book, we're still on track to do that March twenty-ninth. You've got two public hearings in April. I think one of them's actually now on the board retreat day, so just to remind you of that, that'll be a busy day. We're still headed towards May twenty-first is our goal, to ask the board to adopt the final, the final budget, and then we'll post it on our website. I know that was kind of quick, but I only wanted to talk about the new stuff. Prepare, the next time we get together, you'll get the tentative budget in April, not the second March meeting.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Ms. McDonald?
I just have a request. You know, through the years, as I've talked to employees out in the trenches, as I say, I know that a lot of the instructional coaches, they always come in early before they're actually to report, and they always stay after their reporting days. Is there, I would like us to consider to pay them or extend their contract days because, you know, instructional coaches do a tremendous amount of work in the schools that they serve and the students that they serve. I would, I would just like us to look at that, perhaps what it would cost, and I feel like they perhaps deserve that. I'm still a little upset about the fact that teachers will only get the raises, not all certified people. I think that's, is that correct, Ms. Battle? The raises that we're going to give? Not all certified people will get that, is that correct?
So in, there were several different proposals. There was a proposal that included not only teachers, but everyone would get a pay raise. The teachers' compensation would be more, but everyone in the district, all positions would see some pay raise.
Okay. Well, then, I really would like us to take a look at, especially with the instructional coaches and their days of contract, which I have no clue what that is, but they do come in early to be prepared, and they do stay afterwards to help close out that particular school year. So if we could take a look at that and report back, I would certainly appreciate that.
Any other board members, questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. On to our last third financial report.
Are you still up?
Is there one more?
All right, board members, on page one, general fund, fifty-six million, that's because we've gotten a lot of tax money in, so this is going to be brief because that's the main thing about this report. Nutrition's still at three-point-two million at the end of January. This is January's report. I'll come back to you in two weeks and catch up with the February. Here in your general fund operating statement, we're in the bottom of the page, thirteen million. We have collected a bunch of the tax money, so the majority of that for the year has been collected. You know, for the last few months, we've been negative in our cash fund, cash flow has offset that, so we've been fine. So again, we're to the positive thirteen million in the general fund. A lot of our DOE grants, like I said, we've come more in line there with our revenues and expenses, so we're not off now. If you have a negative on that bottom line, it's because we need to draw down the money in the DOE. Through January, our investment's still at 5.38%, a little over $50 million that we're managing. And SPOST, this has got to be one of the biggest ever, one $1.4 million for the month of, actually, December because of the way the report runs in our years. Mr. Chairman, that completes my report.
All right, board members, any questions on the financial report?
You know, the SPOST is just incredible. I remember going through these reports when Ryan was still here, and we were right at $700,000 a month. So it's doubled in my five years on the board, so that's just, it's pretty cool, I think. But I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work, and I'm real excited about the new system and how efficient it will be, not only for people here, but people out in our schools. So it's great. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
All right. Board members, you have informational items. Dr. Taylor already mentioned both of those while she was doing hers. If you have any questions about those, make sure that you ask those. We're at a point then for our governor's team comments. We'll start with Mr. Holmes here to my left. Do you have anything you need to say, Mr. Holmes?
I know it's been busy. I know Mr. Pugh has been busy aligning men for the Real Men Read session that we're about to have later this month. I'd like to say I appreciate all those that have been going to the schools to read to our kids, and I just want to plug it, give a plug. You know, it's disappointing, it's disappointing that we don't have more mentors in our schools than we have. It's been an effort, you know, to push, to put on the classes, to get people where they can be certified, and I'd just like to make a plea to the community, to any businesses, you know, churches or whatever. We need people involved to help us with those who are less fortunate, who are needy in our school system. So I'd just like to make that plea on behalf of the mentoring program, because of a system our size, you know, the numbers that I continue to see is real disappointing. So that's my comment. Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. McDonald? Ms. Cook?
Yes. Welcome back from winter break. Hope you all had a great break and ready to go the homestretch to the end of the year. I want to thank all the staff for their informative updates. It's been very informative tonight. You all put a lot of work and time into this, and we certainly appreciate it. I want to give a shout out to Sandra Long, who is retiring.
We haven't, we haven't proved that yet?
I can't believe you're doing this, Sandra. You've been a rock for us in so many positions. And I'm glad you ended up in the central office, so you could use your talents in a broader way, but we're going to miss you, but happy trails and thanks for all the memories.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of announcements and shout-outs from the omnipotent First District. Want to say that I had a great time on last Friday over in District 3 at Ann Street Elementary celebrating Dr. Seuss. Was able to read one of my favorite children's books called I Am Every Good Thing. So shout-out to those 4th and 5th grade classes, Ms. Jenkins, 4th grade scholars, and Ms. McCarthy and Ms. Deason's 5th grade scholars at Ann Street. You guys rock. This week, I will make my way over to Ors Elementary, Susie B. Exson Elementary School, and John Henry Moore Elementary School to read for Read Across America, different activities that are going on. Leader Holmes mentioned this, Real Men Read will be on March 12th. Shout-out to Adam and Laura, who are making sure that we have people scheduled at the different schools, understanding that we have, all of them are field, we need some readers over at Crescent Elementary. So if you are interested, please be sure to see Mr. Adam Pugh. Also, want to remind you that the 15th of March is when the Gifted Services Survey closes. So for those folks who want to make sure that your voice is heard, this is a great way to become a part of that process, the participatory part, where you get to share your feedback and concerns with the district. Also, want to give a shout-out to the amazing social workers here in Griffin Spalding, Dr. Melissa Johnson, Dr. Luana Carlisle Love, Keisha McGill, Precious Parham, Pamela Hart, and Lauren Flanagan. This week is School Social Work Week, and so we just want to say shout-out to the ladies who support our schools daily here in Griffin Spalding as social workers. Want to give a shout-out to our maintenance workers. Thank you so much for all that you do. If it is too cold in a building or plumbing, whatever the issue is, our maintenance team is there to be at the rescue. Mark your calendars for May 13th. May 13th will be the annual District 1 Senior Recognition Spotlight. May 13th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Griffin Regional College and Career Academy will be the District 1 Senior Spotlight for our graduates. And last, two more things. Enjoyed my trip to Dallas, Texas, to the COSWA Conference. Was sending updates and text messages to the board and to the superintendent, certain things that we need to check out that other districts are doing. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to go and learn and see what other school districts are doing and how student outcomes is affecting their district. And last announcement is, if you live in the omnipotent First District, please know that your precinct, number 16, Gary Reed Fire Station, has been changed to Faith Baptist Church on McIntosh. Again, if you live in District 1 and your voting precinct is Gary Reed Fire Station, that precinct has been moved to Faith Baptist Church, located at 812 East McIntosh Road here in the omnipotent and great city of Griffin, Georgia. Mr. Chair, that concludes my comments.
All right. I want to thank all of the board members for being willing to go to the Archway Retreat. Unfortunately, we had to postpone that, but that will be scheduled again for in the fall. The issue work groups are getting started in March, so you will be getting those that you signed up for, you'll be getting an invitation to that. I'll confirm that with you on those. And I think that's all that I have, other than thank you to everybody here. Dr. Simmons, do you have anything at this time?
No.
Sure.
Ann Street, in Empozol, I came behind you after you had read, and they kept asking me about some ice cream. What was that about?
Oh, yeah, ice cream, cookies, and...
No, Ms. McCarthy's 5th grade class got ice cream.
Okay. I just didn't want you to omit that.
Oh, no, they got their ice cream.
All right, board members, we do have executive session to discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee of the, man, that's long, and to discuss school safety plans that are prepared pursuant to the law. So with that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. I have a motion, I have a second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All right, thank you. Y'all have a wonderful evening. You don't have to stay until we come out, unless you just want to, you're welcome to.
Ms. Ray got to stay.